All right, let's turn to our work session. I apologize for not starting right at 5:00. I had hoped we'd be able to do that. Couldn't do it. All right, so the first topic, I don't have the work session agenda right in front of me. The first topic is going to be transfer of development rights in this excellent memo that Ann and Danielle put together for us. I assume you're going to talk our way through it. And I want to say something for everybody. We need to get through three items tonight and leave ourselves sufficient time to discuss the questions about the work session agenda. We did not give ourselves enough time to do that last time, and we ended up with a half an hour's discussion during the formal meeting. We do not want that to happen again tonight. So please, we're not going to take more than a half an hour, at the most, on any one of these three major topics that we have in our work session agenda tonight. So we've got to be focused. Yeah. Is that turned on?
I don't know if that's turned on. We're not turned on.
Oh, sorry.
It should be now.
Nope. What time will we start in here?
Use this for now.
Will do. So we'll do our part to get through this for you as quickly as we can to the points that you would like to discuss tonight. Just a reminder that this is a follow-up to a memo that you received back in August with kind of the general details. Tonight, we're really looking for your direction on some key policy questions. We are going to discuss five of those policy questions for you, having to do with the sending sites for a transfer, the formula that gets used to calculate the amount of square footage that might be transferred, the priority, the relative priority of a transfer, where those transfers might go geographically, and those eligible receiving sites. As we put together the memo for you, we wanted to, and as we kind of considered the components, the components of a TDR program, our objectives of staff was really to come up with a proposal or to develop a proposal based on your policy direction that would be fair, legally sound, working with the city attorney's office, easy to administer with the staff that we have, simpler for developers and the members of our public to understand, effective, so that it would actually get used as we would intend it to be, and then consistent with the other goals that the city has in our comprehensive plan. So just a little bit of background on transfer of development rights. Do you want it at this point? Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Ann at this point. She's going to walk you through, just remind her real quick, kind of go through a quick example, and then get into those policy questions. This is Ann Russ at our senior planner.
Good afternoon. So I'm going to provide a little background on TDR and then go through an example from riverfront crossings and our existing policy, and then go through some of the research and analysis that we did, and then post some questions to you all for feedback. So transfer of development rights, in this case, is really an incentive to preserve historic resources where property owners can sell or transfer rights to another property. So the historic resource would be preserved, and then on the receiving site, you would get some additional density or intensity bonus as an incentive to transfer that development. There is an existing policy for TDR in our riverfront crossings district. This is an example from the Tate Arms building at 916 South Dubuque Street. This property was locally landmarked and took advantage of the TDR program. In this case, they use the riverfront crossings transfer formula, which you look at the number of stories allowed on a sending site. For the Tate Arms building, it was four stories, and you multiply that by the area of the sending site. In this case, it was 8,700 square feet. So the development rights available for transfer for the Tate Arms building was 34,800 square feet. The developer decided to transfer some of that potential to a receiving site just north at 912 South Dubuque Street. So again, the total transfer potential is a little over 34,000. 7,400 square feet were transferred to 912 South Dubuque Street, leaving 27,400 square feet remaining on the Tate Arms site that could be transferred in the future. This is a slide of our existing local historic landmarks. We have 52 historic landmarks within the city. A lot of them are concentrated in the core of the community. And I give you this background because the riverfront crossings provision, specifically that transfer formula, and these existing local historic landmarks were factored into the analysis that we did. So when looking at, kind of exploring a citywide transfer of development rights program, we did two analyses, one on sending sites and one on receiving sites. So for the sending sites analysis, we really wanted to identify of all the existing landmarks, how much development could they potentially transfer? So we only looked at existing local and national landmarks. There are several other buildings throughout the community that are eligible for local landmark designation, and the Historic Preservation Commission is proactively looking to landmark more buildings. So as we landmark more buildings, this development potential could increase. So we use the riverfront crossings transfer formula, and looking at the local landmarks only, we're looking at around a little over 4 million square feet that could be transferred to another site. Adding in national landmarks, it's a little over 5 million. So to kind of gauge what is 5 million square feet of development, we looked at the RISE. So around 12 RISE buildings is around 5 million square feet. Next, we looked at the receiving sites, and we used the sites that staff had proposed to city council in the previous memo. So we were looking at riverfront crossings, downtown, South Johnson, South Van Buren area, and then citywide on sites that allow multi-unit development. So in this analysis, we were trying to gauge, within our existing community, how much capacity do we have for development within these potential receiving areas? And could they accommodate the transfer potential of the potential sending areas? So we identified vacant and underutilized sites within these areas. We removed sites within floodplains, sites with historic buildings on them, and then land that is publicly zoned. So for all of the sites remaining that were vacant or underutilized, we estimate that in riverfront crossing, there's about 2.5 million square feet of development potential. In the downtown, around 242,000 square feet of development potential. Within the downtown, although it is part of, at the core of our community, there are a lot of historic resources within our downtown, so it really reduced the amount of development potential. In South Johnson and South Van Buren, none of the sites within that area met our criteria as either vacant or underutilized. Looking citywide at properties that would allow multi-unit development, the development potential we estimated is around 5.3 million square feet. These are just some maps that show the sites that were, that either met the vacant or underutilized threshold. This is riverfront crossings. And again, they met our definition of either vacant or underutilized. It doesn't mean that these sites are necessarily redeveloping. Downtown, and then citywide sites that allow multi-unit development. So a summary of the analysis is that a significant amount, there's a significant amount of transfer potential if we apply the riverfront crossings transfer formula to our local historic landmarks. And as I mentioned before, this will increase as more properties are locally landmarked. So depending on the receiving sites that are identified for a citywide program, it could potentially be difficult to accommodate the transfer potential of all of our local In the research that we did, we identified some issues and possible constraints, one being the market potential. We haven't studied the market for a transfer of development rights program. We don't know if there's a demand for it. And completing a study by our January deadline would prove difficult. The second issue is lack of certainty in the process. When we looked at other local jurisdictions, examples of their transfer of development rights programs, many of them had a non-administrative review and approval of transfer rights. So it would either go to a board or a commission or the city council. Although that's common, it does provide less certainty in the ability to transfer those rights and get that additional bonus. There were some examples, the city of Minneapolis was one, where they allowed an administrative review of transfers, which would provide more certainty to the development community and also to the property owner who owned the local landmark. Lastly, other bonus mechanisms. What we learned through our research is that if a city has existing zoning designations that allow higher density or higher heights, or offers other bonuses for public benefits, it may dilute the effectiveness of a transfer of development rights program. The city currently offers many other bonuses for public benefits, for affordable housing, for open space, and it's uncertain how a citywide TDR policy would compare to those other bonuses that we're already providing. So I'm going to go through all of the policy questions for city council and then turn it back over to the mayor. There are five major questions. I think the most major is probably whether or not the city council wants us to move forward with the citywide ordinance. Assuming that's the case, these are the questions that we need your input on. Should eligible sending sites include existing local historic landmarks or only future local historic landmarks? So one option is to allow existing and future local historic landmarks as sending sites. This would be a fair way to approach it, and it's consistent with our riverfront crossings provisions. Another option is to only allow these transfers to future parcels that are landmarked. With that option, it may be easier to accommodate the transfer potential. The next question is, should a citywide TDR program apply the existing transfer calculation formula that is outlined in the riverfront crossings district or a new formula? Excuse me. So if you remember, the riverfront crossings formula is basically the base height times the square footage of the site. So do we want to keep that existing formula? It is a more generous formula. It could provide more of an incentive, and it's consistent with how things work now. Another option is to provide a new transfer formula, which may be easier to accommodate transfers, but it could be more complex and more difficult to administer. The third question is, the city already gives bonuses for certain public benefits provided with development projects. Should preservation of historic resources be treated in a similar manner or given higher priority? So one option is to model a program on our current bonus provisions, which might be simpler and easier to administer. However, bonuses for multiple public benefits could dilute the effectiveness of a program. Another option is to allow transfers that exceed our current bonus provisions, which would provide more of an incentive. There could be community concerns about additional height and density, though, and we haven't analyzed the impacts of that at this time yet either. Question four is, what type of process should be established for the review and approval of transfers? So we could keep the existing riverfront crossings formula, or the procedure, excuse me, where everything would be reviewed and approved by city council. That would be consistent and simple with how we do things now. It might not be as certain for developers. Another option is to establish a new procedure, where maybe some are approved administratively, and then anything above that threshold could be approved by city council. And lastly, what areas of the city do we want to identify as receiving sites? Staff has proposed several, riverfront crossings, downtown, South Johnson, South Van Buren, and then a citywide approach. Some benefits of looking at riverfront crossings is that it's a current receiving area where we anticipate, and the master plan identifies this area for higher density. Downtown, it is the core of the community, but as I mentioned before, there are significant historic resources. South Johnson, South Van Buren, at the last meeting, there seemed to be some interest in this area. However, we may need to develop an urban design plan prior to identifying it as a transfer or receiving area, which could take some time. Lastly, the multi-unit sites throughout the city. This does provide the most capacity for transfers, but it could potentially be more impactful. So that's a summary of the questions. Here's our timeline. Our deadline for getting an ordinance adopted is the end of January, so again, we'd like your feedback on the questions.
Before we start discussing this, I'd like to thank Danielle and Ann for giving us such an outstanding report, and this oral presentation and PowerPoint presentation is really, really clear and crisp. So thanks so much for doing that. We need to focus on the threshold question first, so could you go to that?
They are on one slide, if that helps you. We put that at the end, but we can certainly go to...
Use the mic, please.
Yes, so, is that on the threshold question? It'd be helpful to have the threshold question in front of us. That's what I was trying to get at.
The bonus, this question?
Yeah, it was right at the start of this series of policy questions.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure what you mean by threshold question.
Well, I'm sorry. You said, "The threshold," I think the one I was...
Oh, do we want to move forward with an ordinance or not?
The threshold question is, do we want to pursue this approach? So that's what we need to focus on first, because everything else depends on how we answer that question. So do you all have things to say that you want to either ask questions about or respond to that threshold question? Sorry for that lousy sentence.
Yes, I would like to pursue, proceed forward with this, and we know we already have some significant interest based upon what happened on Clinton Street. So I think one of the key issues facing historic preservation is this question of loss of value for the landowner, and I think this goes a long way to addressing that. So yes, I would like to support it, moving forward.
I understand. All right, I'll give you a counterargument, just so that we can be clear about what's at stake here. What you laid out before strikes me as tremendously complex with a lot of uncertainty, especially when you start talking about where the receiving areas are and about transferring density to particular receiving areas throughout the city. I think that's a huge can of worms, which could be manageable, but as I look at it, there's a lot of uncertainty about that. You know, just with regard to adding density to any particular area, there's often opposition from nearby property owners. So if we say we're going to transfer density to a set of areas, I don't know exactly where, we'd be getting into that, and we'd have to understand that there would be, there would be resistance, especially if we had some kind of council review process, which is one of the questions that you ultimately ask. So anyhow, I'm just trying to draw attention to complexity and uncertainty about this. One other point has to do with the bonus provisions. You laid out a series of bonus provisions that already exist in the riverfront crossings district, in the PRM zones, and in the, what, the central district?
CB zones.
Central Business District zone. Yeah, and there's overlap and inconsistency there, so I think that really would need to be clarified somehow. I've talked enough about that. That's sort of my general reaction.
Well, I support going forward, you know, looking into the transfer of development rights. I agree, Jim, there are complexities and challenges with that, but I do think the concept, at least in certain areas, is worth pursuing. I'm not confident it will work in the downtown, because it's already zoned CB10, so I don't... My sense of, my understanding of the transfer of development rights is you're transferring to a condition which would benefit from the additional transfer, and I'm not sure that that makes sense in the downtown. So I'm looking at receiving areas which are in need of that added density. I think the, you know, that area south of Johnson...
We've had a subsequent discussion, though, John.
Yeah, let's not go deeply into that.
All right.
I'm willing to move forward with it at this time.
Yeah, if we're just, if we're just talking about moving forward, I think there are some bumps, but we can address them.
Pauline, Maz?
Yeah, it sounds good to me. We can move forward on this.
Okay.
I agree, too, if we are able to have time for more discussion on some of the concerns.
Maybe we can go, it seems like there's clear support for moving ahead. Can we go into the details about the particular questions now? Like, why don't you restate the question, and, well, I'll do it. I can read as well as you can. So, "Should eligible sending sites include existing local historic landmarks or only future local historic landmarks?"
I would say, and I know this is inconsistent with riverfront crossings, but I would say only future local historic landmarks. Why do we, as a city, want to give ones that have already been landmarked and that cannot be destroyed basically under that landmark provision, why do we now want to turn around and give them a density bonus?
I agree. I think it makes no sense at all to provide density bonuses to existing local landmarks.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Was there, there was a subtle variation on that, wasn't there? I'm trying to remember the report you wrote. Well, maybe not, so...
Well, I mean, one thing I think that's important with this, and this is not how it happened in riverfront crossings, I believe with Tate Arms, is the idea that you can't get the bonus until it's designated. I think there has to be something in this ordinance that allows that to be more of a simultaneous or a conditional thing. In other words, that the developer agrees that if they get the transfer of development rights, it basically is done as a local landmark conditioned upon getting the transfer of development rights. Otherwise, what you're asking a developer to do is, on good faith, get the local landmark designation and then potentially have a council say, "No, we're not going to do the TDR." So to me, it has to be more simultaneous.
Isn't that also a subsequent issue in terms of council versus administrative? Or am I...
Maybe. To me, it kind of comes onto the idea that these are, because I think...
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
It's future versus already done.
It sounds like a good point to me, Susan. So can we move, yeah, there we go, number two. So, "Should a citywide TDR ordinance apply the existing transfer calculation formula..." I said I could read. "Should a citywide TDR ordinance apply the existing transfer calculation formula that is outlined in the riverfront crossings district or a new formula?" I'm inclined to think a new formula. That's my quick gut reaction. Maybe you want to explain why you say that?
I think the memo did a good job of saying that the formula for riverfront crossings was exceptionally generous. At least it said generous, maybe not exceptionally generous, but it was generous with the idea that there was going to be a lot of demand for redevelopment down there, and we wanted to have any historic structures hopefully preserved. And so by giving a very generous bonus, we were more likely to get those preserved. When I look at this going forward, and because of how generous that is, the idea that came to my mind was, instead of taking the entire lot, take the square footage that is buildable upon the lot that has the historic structure and the number of stories, and use that as a multiplier, not the square footage of the entire lot, but just what is actually buildable. And then what you're looking at is you're saying, "Okay, because you're not going to build it on this lot, we're going to let you take that same square footage and move it to a different lot. We're not going to give you more square footage than you can build, than you could already build on this lot." So that was kind of a preliminary idea that I had. Oh, also, minus the square footage that already exists on the lot.
Do the rest of you have anything to say about this?
My preference is the existing formula for riverfront crossings. I know it is more generous, but I think predictability, consistency, and simplicity are also virtues as well, and I think we're more likely to have that with the existing framework, so that's what I would support. And in terms of if a new formula is supported by four or more counselors, I would want to defer that particular issue in terms of how that would work. It's sort of hard to speak off the cuff on that.
John, Pauline, Maz?
I lean a little bit toward the new formula, but yeah, it's very difficult, given the time constraint here, to really think this through.
Well, we'll have to revisit this at some point in the future, but giving the staff an indication of what our thinking is is very helpful.
I would agree, because we need to look at it and see if it's going to provide an adequate amount then as an incentive.
Maz?
Yes.
You okay with that? All right, three. "The city already gives bonuses for certain public benefits provided with development projects. Should preservation of historic resources be treated in a similar manner or given higher priority?" I think this is a really tough question, and I don't know the answer to it. But I do know, like I said, when I first introduced or started our discussion, there are multiple actions that warrant bonuses in the three different areas as they currently exist, and there could possibly be a different one here. So that complexity is, kind of confounds the difficulty of figuring out what to do here. But in terms of deciding what really has priority, whether the historic preservation has priority over any one of these other things...
It's tough.
That's a tough nut to crack. So...
And I'm not sure how you codify it. As I read it, that's what I was trying to think of, is, okay, if we're looking at how we're going to write a code...
Add more density would be one example, which, straight away, I would have concerns with, because I think...
Okay, so you're saying you'd give it higher priority by giving more density?
More density to it.
Okay.
And I think it should be equal priority, and again, I think it's simpler and easier to administer, and I think the staff identifies option A. That would be my preference.
That was kind of what I was thinking, is not make it more complex than we have to.
Yes.
I agree, easier to understand.
I'm not sure what you mean by give it equal weight or whatever.
Well, I mean, isn't that the precise question posed? I mean, should preservation of historic resources be treated in a similar manner or given a higher priority? So I think it should be in a similar manner to other sort of positive items that we would like to promote. So no greater or nor less in a similar manner. I think that's the question posed.
Yeah, I agree in that to be treated as, in a similar manner.
My short answer is, you know, I don't think it should be given any higher priority, but I would add quickly that what had brought to my mind is there an awful lot of benefits listed here. Could we look at other ways, whether it's land use regulations or our taxing policy to try to address them?
It's a matter of value. What do we value? And if we say that preserving an historic resource is of equal weight to providing Class A office space or masonry on buildings or affordable housing, or any one of the, I don't know, 15 or 20 other items that are listed in that, in the report, then what do we value? We're saying we don't, not being clear about what we value. So I think this, my personal view, is this needs to be visited more thoroughly. Yeah.
Yes.
So neither similar weight or greater weight?
At this moment, yeah. Unless, I mean, I don't know if that really kind of ruins what the staff needs to do. Jeff, you're kind of grimacing. I don't know. Good grimacing over there.
Or even maybe to give us ideas of how you might write a code of if it were to be similar weight versus if it were to be a higher priority. Would you see that maybe working? That might help us in our discussion of it.
I was just going to say that it kind of goes back to the previous question on the transfer calculation, because the riverfront crossings current formula is so generous. If we move forward with that existing formula, it might be providing a little bit higher weight to historic preservation. If we come up with a new formula that is maybe more in line with some of the other bonus provisions... maybe more in line with some of the other bonus provisions, that might be more even across the board.
Yeah. My personal view is that we need to think about this in terms of what our council priorities are and try to figure out what, what deserves the greatest bonuses. If there's a variation, if it's equal weight or if it's variation among particular actions, and I don't see how we can do that tonight.
Uh huh.
So, can we go on to the next item? Number four, "What types of, what type of process should be established for the review and approval of sending and receiving transfer of development rights?"
Now, in Riverfront Crossings, isn't some of it can be approved administratively, and then some of it is council?
Not for the transfers.
Not for transfers, okay.
Not for transfers. It all has to go to council.
Okay, thank you.
Well, here too, I think I would lean toward a new procedure. I mean, I, in general, do support streamlining processes if it's something that is a priority and if, insofar as that would help the program to be successful. So, that, that would be my initial response.
Boy, I'm really worried about that, because I, I think the code's going to have to be written really, really carefully, because I think the minute you start transferring some of these into some of these multifamily areas where, meaning larger multifamily buildings in residential neighborhoods, we already hear concerns about that. So, on the one hand, I like that, because I like the simplicity of it. I like the predictability for developers, but I'm also really concerned.
Well, that's the longer answer. I would certainly not support even considering multifamily without stronger design standards for how we would accomplish that.
I, I like keeping it subject to review by council, realizing full well that that may slow down the development process, that may make it, I guess, somewhat less predictable. But even though it's more efficient administratively, I think ultimately this is a political question, you know, in terms of where this development goes to. And as to predicting sort of what council will do, I think any time you have a new council body, the community does adapt in terms of there's a sufficient degree of predictability that I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. So, I'd like it subject to council review.
Same thing. I, I like it to be like streamlined review and approved by the council before.
So, keep the existing Riverfront Crossings process?
Not the, no, no, I don't mean that. It's either or, right?
Yeah, either option.
Yeah, I second option. No, new one. Just everything up to the council before we can approve it, yeah.
Then that's not the streamline. The streamline is more of an administrative review, not council.
That's what I meant, really.
Okay, yeah, this.
Yeah.
I like the review by the council, although Rockne touched on something. As we all know, the face of the council changes depending on the elections and who's seated here. So, their opinions on some of these things may change and it might differ, and then the developers may not really know where we're coming from or what we're thinking about. So, that'd be the only con part, but I, I prefer keeping it with the council.
But keep in mind, I mean, I know it's a separate project, but how this arose in that project last May, at least, had we had something in place at that point, I think if we had a transfer development process, I think that probably there would have been a great degree of certainty for that particular developer, is sort of my thought. So, we just didn't have the administrative tool to be able to do it, or the, and that's why we're in this particular process. So, I think it's a good concern, but I look at at least that most recent example, I think we're probably pretty sure that we would approve that.
So, I'm a little unclear about who favors what. So, how many, show me your hand if you support option A.
I do.
Three, I count three.
Option A is review by council.
Right.
Yes.
And option, how many of you support option B? Uncertainty, huh?
I thought you were supporting.
No, I don't. Okay, here's, here's also where I sit at on this too. We have a January deadline with this thing, okay? I think to write code that we can be comfortable with that would allow administrative review is going to take us longer than being able to get this done by January. So, what I would suggest is if we could, that we agree at this point in time that we go with council review, because I think that makes the code easier to write.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I'm on board with that, Susan.
Jeff is nodding yes. And then maybe we can get this deadline met, if this is something we really want to move forward with.
Yeah.
And then maybe we come back later and say, "Okay, what we really would ultimately like to do is get it to an administrative review, but we need more time to do that." But this would allow us potentially to get it done by January.
Sounds reasonable to me. How many people support that idea?
Yeah, Susan.
Okay, so, so we're going to do that? Number five, "What areas should a citywide TDR ordinance identify as receiving sites?" Two options, no, there are, there's more than two, right? So, one is River, the Riverfront Crossings area. Is this and/or? Yeah, so any combination, right? The downtown, the South Johnson Van Buren area, and/or multi-unit sites throughout the city and/or other sites or areas. So, I don't think transferring density to the downtown makes any sense. Put that out there for reasons I think you described in the report. I, as you know, support the idea of working, trying to figure out a way to enhance the quality of the South Johnson, South Van Buren area by transferring some density into there, if it's really well-designed. That's why I brought up this urban design plan idea. I know that that would take time to develop and property owners would have to be involved. So, that's pretty complicated. So, what do the rest of you all think?
I agree, Jim. I'm just wondering mechanically, in terms of the downtown, they already have unlimited ability to build height-wise. So, I mean, how would they, the whole part about transfer development is you're allowing them to do something they otherwise wouldn't ordinarily do. So, how, how would that work, Jeff, if, if we did do, if we did do downtown?
I, I think your point is well-taken. You know, right now, in the CB-10 zone, you can get up to a 15 FAR with, through a bonus that's approved administratively. So, our existing provisions are pretty generous.
Already, okay. But I would agree with Jim on that.
Well, again, I, I guess I would suggest, you know, again, maybe for simplicity and timeframe, that we maybe start with Riverfront Crossings and the multi-unit sites throughout the city.
I understand.
I'm concerned about the multi-unit sites, as I said earlier, but again, if we've got council review.
So, if we do that, we, we need to remember that there's, there are already multiple opportunities to increase the density in the Riverfront Crossings district, you know, by, just by rezoning to start off with and through the height bonus provisions. So, we'd be adding to that. And I, I don't think that's very wise, given what's already provided in the Riverfront, or the form-based code for the Riverfront Crossings district, which kind of leaves the multi-unit sites throughout the city. And that's where we get into what I worry about in terms of feedback from neighbors, so.
Jim, but I would respond to that, that we, we would be giving ourselves council review.
Yep.
And I think if, presumably if we did the transfer, we'd have some degree of specificity in terms of where they would be going, what they'd be proposing. So, if they were out of line with what those expectations were, if we're in Riverfront Crossings, we could always say no, is, is my understanding of how it works. So, I would, I would support the A and D. And I guess defer on South Johnson, South Van Buren streets at this point. I, I think that's an area that's already pretty dense, and we just need to see more detail on that.
It's dense, but also has a lot of potential, I think, with the total redevelopment, because most of those are not very tall buildings. And so, I think, I think with Jim's point of getting a good plan for down there, and if the incentives were enough.
Yeah.
You could get a lot of those buildings potentially torn down and rebuilt with much higher quality and higher density, and we could demand more amenities and that sort of thing. So, there's that potential down the road.
Yeah, I think Riverfront Crossings and multifamily in the short term seem to be most viable. But I, you know, the South Johnson area in my mind is, it's already zoned redevelopment. It's what I would almost call blighted. So, it is, in terms of that aspect, you know, I think it's a critical site, but, you know, our timing is, is limited. The other I would add is, maybe again, under long-term, would be underperforming commercial zones, shopping malls, that I think also, it seems more and more likely they need to be reimagined. Yeah, that sounds like a pretty good suggestion to me. It's worth looking into. How many of you are, I'm not in favor of Riverfront Crossings for the reasons I just articulated. How many of you are?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a majority of council in favor of that. How many of you are in favor of the multi-unit sites throughout the city? I think I am too, and I guess I'd add one caveat to that. I think it'd be really important to make this a clearly transparent process once we get into it, so that people aren't shocked to discover that some density might be coming, you know, nearby. Okay. Is there anything else we need to deal with on that?
No, I think we've given the direction.
Well, South Johnson, is there support for somewhat in the longer term, trying to reimagine the South Johnson?
Oh, yeah.
In the longer term, yes.
In the longer term.
But not between now and January.
Because that's going to be complicated.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we took 15 more minutes than I had hoped, but you all did great. Thanks so much, and thanks to our council for working our way through that.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is to review the Emerald Ash Bore Response Strategy, and Julie Seidel-Johnson and Zach Hall have prepared a report for us. Thanks so much for doing that. It's a very informative report. Julie, thanks. Zach, I see you're sitting there too. So, yeah, let's get into it.
All right. I'm going to take you through this very quickly. Julie Seidel-Johnson, Parks and Rec Director. But I have all kinds of experts up here with me. I have Zachary Hall, our Park Superintendent. Next to him, Mike Kittner, who is the Idols Entomologist. So, he is the state EAB expert. And then Mark Vitale is right there, one of our district foresters for the DNR. So, someone in here can answer your questions when we get done. Let me get through the presentation first of all. So, we're here tonight for an update on Emerald Ash Bore, and here it is, live and in person, taken two weeks ago when we were called out to look at a tree. And you see the address right there. That's what it is, a little green, a little green beetle, and it's the eggs that it lays and the larvae that, as they grow, they burrow underneath the tree's bark, and that basically cuts off the tree's nutrients. So, it dies from the inside out. It's very difficult lots of times to see if the tree has Emerald Ash Bore or not. We do have some examples, though. Take all these pictures taken within the last two weeks. This is the tree that just had the beetles in it. You can see how this is taken in mid-August, and it's thinning out all over. This one shows, you see, it looks at the bottom like there's some healthy growth. Well, that's actually part of the regrowth after it starts to die, and that's not a sign of health in this case. Problem here, obviously, look how it's sitting with a transformer right around it. Lots of these are big and somewhat difficult. Here's another one. You can see on the right side, you can see how the crown is thinning out. Some of it still looks healthy, but a good portion of this tree is already dead. You can see on the left side it, in comparison to what other healthy trees around it look like at this time of year. Church Street again, same thing. You see the one on the, it's the same tree from two different directions. This one, we got called out to do a tree, or pruning, and didn't realize it had Emerald Ash Bore in it until we went out and to prune it, because the homeowner told us that that, that branch was, was hanging over the street. Get out there, took the branch down, and guess what? That's, it had Emerald Ash Bore in it. Here it is, it's 600 Market Street, looking up at the trees from down below. Once again, all those empty branches are signs. So, here's the thing, it's here. But we want to make sure, and I want to make sure that we dispel some of the, the information or some of the untruths that are out there about this. First of all, we've been hearing from the public, "Don't cut down all our ash trees." That has never been our goal, and we don't have a plan to cut down all ash trees at any one time. That was an earlier strategy from a lot of cities when Emerald Ash Bore was first discovered. That has never been our strategy here. We take the trees out as they decline in health to a point where they become a public safety hazard, and I'll talk more about that as we go through. Secondly, people say it's the easy way out. That's why staff wants to cut the trees down. I just got to say, I've got a lot of our forestry staff back here, and if, there's a staff that's first of all, well-educated and well-qualified in what they do, but also that just loves trees. We get it, we get it in certain neighborhoods. This is a big impact. We hate to take down any tree ever, and, and having to know that we're going to take down a lot of them is difficult for us to. It's important to know that there's two different answers to the questions. Are we, are we taking down all the ash tree? No. But if you ask me, do I think we're going to lose most of our ash trees? The answer is yes, probably over the next 10 years, 10 or 15 years. We're going to lose a great portion of them. One more picture that shows how the tree canopy is starting to fail up above. Why is that a problem? Well, to see all the trees that came down last week with our 80 mile an hour winds, this is a real hazard throughout the city in a lot of locations. So, that's part of why we have to take trees down when it gets to this point. How did we get to Emerald Ash Bore as it is? Really a lesson not learned through Dutch elm disease. Cities planted lots of elm trees. Dutch elm came through, killed most of them. So, the, the new magic tree to replace all of them was the ash tree. So, that's why you see entire neighborhoods planted in ash trees. They were symmetrical. It makes a really pretty look down the, the street. We get it. That's why they were all done. But lesson not learned. And, and really, that becomes the, the gist of what our recommendation is, is to make sure we have a very diversified tree cover throughout the city, so that we don't have to deal with this in such a huge impact in the future. So, where are the ash trees? Now, I'm going to show you the next slide, and it's going to look like a lot of trees, but hang on, there's more to the story. Here's from our tree inventory. Here's where the significant ash trees are distributed in Iowa City. So, you can see, they are actually all over the city, some neighborhoods more than others. Significant in that it is larger than, help me out here.
Essentially one inch in diameter.
Yeah, so larger than one inch in diameter. When we talk later about ones that are possibly treatable, we don't even, we don't treat even those small ones, though, because we feel like those can be replaced fairly quickly. But here's where they're at. But if there's something to the story that I want to make sure everyone realizes, here's the percentages of trees right now, of different types of trees in our tree canopy. So, ash tree is not the most prevalent tree out there. In fact, it's tied with like five different species for the second most prevalent. Maple is by far. So, the other thing we're hearing a lot lately is, man, those foresters don't want us to plant maple trees. This is why. We don't want any, too much of any one type of tree out there. This is the basis for staff's recommendation not to spend a lot of money chemically treating the ash tree. Of those top three or four species up there, each one of them has some kind of disease or risk factor coming at them, and either right now or coming soon. If we decide to treat one type of tree, do you want us to do that for all? Because each one of these infestations or tree diseases comes with their own options for treatment. We really feel like the better way to do it is to diversify the overall tree canopy. So, as you lose some, you don't lose them all in any one street. Here's a timeline of Emerald Ash Bore and how it's affected Iowa City. So, it was discovered in the United States in 2002. In 2004, our city forestry staff, couple of them sitting back there, identified it and stopped planting ash trees in the city of Iowa City in 2004 on public lands. That's a really early response. So, when people say we didn't know this was coming, we've been responding for a long time. 2010, first seen in Iowa. 2014, the first beetle identified in Iowa, in Iowa City. We weren't actually put on the list of infected counties at that time. That didn't happen until 2016. But notice the bars over to the right. That is our, the orange is our tree removals, and the green is our tree plantings. Now, there's a lot of rumors out there that we have an EAB tree removal contract. We do have a tree removal contract to take out diseased and declining trees. But as you'll see, in 2015, we took out 223 trees with that, with that contract, but only 34 of them were ash trees. The same thing the next year, 177 trees taken out, 41 were ash. Last year, 297 trees taken out, 107 were ash trees. So, ash trees are not the only thing, and not even the most prevalent thing that we've had to take out. had to take out in recent years. It is climbing. We are finding more and more trees to be infected and declining for the ash trees, so it will change in the coming years. But it certainly shows that we haven't been out there just cutting down ash trees. The green number is the number of replanting, and we're getting to more than a two-to-one ratio for every tree we take out, we replant. So if we take out a tree in someone's, in front of someone's house, we give them some options of what tree we can replant, and we come back and replant, and we'll give you a few more details on that in a minute. But it's really interesting that we have been, we've been actually at this longer than most cities in Iowa, and we maybe just haven't done a good job of communicating that with the public, but we really have been trying to respond as it's come on board. We're next going to go through an EAB 101, and I'm going to turn this over to Mike Kittner from Idols to walk you through the Emerald Ash Bore itself. And we're going to start with, what does an ash tree look like? Because believe it or not, this is the number one question we actually get right now.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Again, my name is Mike Kittner with Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, and we saw some ugly pictures of ash trees there. This particular one is a nice-looking ash tree, one that hasn't probably been attacked yet by Emerald Ash Bore. But as she said, our office gets a lot of calls, it sounds like they do too. What is an ash tree? What is this beetle attacking? And it really comes down to ash trees. We're not talking about maples or oaks. Want to be real clear with that. I was asked to talk about this slide here, you know, to maybe help identify an ash tree. One of the things you're going to be looking at is they have a compound leaf. So the picture up there in the top right, you can see that's actually one leaf with seven-leaf lits. Another thing, it's hard to tell from that picture there of the tree, but they have opposite branch patterns. A lot of trees out there have alternate branch patterns. So if you were to look at a tree, if it has opposite branches and that compound leaf and then that kind of diamond-shaped bark, more than likely, if you're living in Iowa, it's going to be an ash tree. So hopefully that helps with identification.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay, so the beetle itself is, it's a wood-boring beetle. It's quite small, only about a half an inch in length. It is native to Asia, like we saw on the previous slides there. And again, it's going to attack true ash trees. So here in Iowa, we're primarily looking at white ash and green ash trees. It does attack large and small trees, all the way down to half an inch diameter trees, all the way up to your fully largest mature trees. So we get questions about that. Will it attack little trees, too? Yes, it will. And another important key factor is it attacks nearly all ash trees. So it's not a hit-and-miss, cross-your-fingers, I hope it's going to miss my tree. It's going to nearly attack 100% of all ash trees in infested areas at some point. The dawg beetle does fly short distances, luckily only half or about a mile or less a year. But the downside is that the reason it's moving so quickly is humans. People are moving around in things such as infested firewood and ash logs. So the dawg beetle is going to be out and about flying from about May of August. You saw that picture, was recently emerging from a tree. The female does lay eggs. Unfortunately, she males lays quite a few eggs, anywhere from about 70 eggs on average, and those are laid in the bark crevices of the tree, usually something that's undetected, not something that you're going out and looking for. They're quite, quite small. The larva stage is, of the insect, is really what's doing the damage to the tree. It's below the bark, kind of out of sight, and once those eggs hatch, they start off as a very, very, very small larva, chew their way through the bark, and then as they grow, right underneath the bark layer, they start to create those channels, those galleries we refer them to. And that is really what's doing the damage to the tree. You see the bottom-left-hand picture that was created, that gallery was created by one larva, and then the arrow to the right, you can imagine as the population starts to build up and more and more larva in a tree, it really has a detrimental effect on the tree. And essentially, it girdles the tree, and the water nutrient movement up and down the tree is restricted. And the picture there on the right, again, is just another picture of a declining ash tree that's under attack by Emerald Ash Bore. This is a good visual slide, what it can do to community. A nice residential street, and the thing, kind of the catch here is the timeframe. You know, in a short period of time, from 2006, again, and this is Toledo, Ohio, but in 2006 to 2009, it went from a full canopy street basically to a barren, dormant-looking street. So it can really move in and have a huge impact on aesthetics. This gives you an idea, Emerald Ash Bore. We see about it, hear about it in the news a lot, and people, you know, might, we hear about it all the time, but is it really having that big of an impact? Just give it some time, and it will. This is a chart here that was created from Dr. Dan Herms at Ohio State University and David Tree Experts, and you can see the percent of mortality of ash trees as time progresses after that first finding. Keep in mind, the first year of detection of Emerald Ash Bore, usually, we are not able to find. Even the second year or third year, sometimes we're not able to find. Again, these larvae are in low concentrations underneath the bark in the beginning, and once we start seeing those external signs and symptoms, usually we're three, four years already into an infestation. So the take-home message here is it's kind of an exponential growth of trees dying as we progress, and really at about half a dozen years in to about a dozen years in, you can really see it to ramp up that, the tree depth. Just a little history here. It was found in the Detroit, Michigan area in 2002, and you can kind of see the progression of spread through the years. Already by 2005, it had spread into Indiana and Ohio, all those red dots, as a positive detection. 2009, you can see it spreading out even further. There's satellite populations, so it's not necessarily spreading like a wave. And again, that's largely in part due to people moving around, infested firewood, campers, trailers, trains, whatever it be. And those satellite populations are starting to grow, and then they coalesce. 2014, and then 2018, and it's over, in over 30 states at this time. As far as Iowa goes, we first found it here in our state in 2010. It stayed luckily up in the county there in the northeast part of the state, in Alamokey County, for the first two years, and then we just started detecting in other counties in 2013, 2014, and then there's all the way to last year, 2017. So all the counties that are designated and read there have at least one or more Emerald Ash Bore confirmation in that county. You can see by looking at this map, again, from the timeline that Julie shared, Emerald Ash Bore was found in Johnson County, more specifically Iowa City, in 2016, and this year alone, we've already had 11 confirmed positive counties, and that number will probably grow by the end of the year. This is a site that was first found in Johnson County, Iowa City on the University of Iowa campus, February 2016. Campus folks contacted me, Andy here, and went out to look at the trees, and they did a great job, had a great help. And unlike some situations, we actually found this tree somewhat earlier on because we had to drop branches to get what we needed to. Sometimes when I show up at a site, the infestation has progressed quite low in the ground, where I can actually walk up to the tree and find the galleries underneath the bark. We had to go up higher in the tree to find what we were looking for. So that's one sign that it was found a little bit earlier on. Again, you can see the picture on the bottom right-hand, there's those galleries again from a dropped branch from one of the trees there at Gibson Square. So my final thoughts on my portion here. The unfortunate thing about Emerald Ash Bore, again, it spends most of its life underneath the bark. We're not seeing it, we're not noticing it. So distribution is always greater and larger than what we're anticipating. We here at the Iowa EAB team designate really any ash tree within 15 miles of a known infestation to be at risk, at a higher risk of being attacked by Emerald Ash Bore. Can't stress enough to be proactive, not reactive, especially when it comes to safety. Dying, declining ash trees are, they behave differently than a lot of other trees out there. They're very brittle. You saw some of the pictures, and I think there's more pictures to come, falling ash trees. And also, arborists need to be careful and tree climbers of dead and declining ash trees because, again, they're very brittle, and when you cut them down, they, they can really, you know, cause damage to either people or property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm going to have you hold your questions so we can through all of this. Just one second here. Okay. So I'm going to take a few minutes to talk about why we remove trees and what our process is here in Iowa City to give people a better understanding of, oops, yep, why the trees are coming out. So first of all, we don't really want to take down any trees, and we don't have to. So the number one reason trees are taken down is that we feel that they're a public safety hazard. They become a condition, they're of hangers over a trail. You see the one on the right, that's a picture from Chicago, but we do see that throughout our park system. We want trails and roads to be safe. If the tree is declining condition due to disease or infestation, we take it out, no matter if it's been treated, no matter what. If it's become a safety hazard, it has to come out. We lose a lot of trees because of storm damage. Last week's winds, we had over 100 calls on trees when we had the 80-mile-an-hour winds at night, as you can imagine. And then we do take out a certain number of trees for public improvement projects, street projects, park projects, sometimes mean taking out a tree. And that is one instance where if we have to choose between two trees, and we try to move things around so we don't impact trees, but ash trees kind of score more points, we tend to take those out more than other trees within the parks or streets if we have to make a choice between two. But that's really the only time we would take out an ash tree that isn't showing signs of decline, is to make way for some project. Okay, let's talk storm damage. I'm going to have Zach actually talk you through the next couple of slides.
Thank you. So this is a, this is not an ash tree. This is actually a walnut tree, a black walnut tree on South Lucas Street. So this tree did come down in the storm last week, and this was the main culprit for the power outage that folks had experienced. So you can see, obviously, it did some damage to this vehicle, took out the power pole. One thing that doesn't really show up in the picture is across the street, it impacted actually a green ash tree, private ash tree, uprooted it somewhat and basically made it not structurally sound. When the arborist was removing this tree and then removing the other tree, they found Emerald Ash Bore in the, in the private green ash tree, and it was a completely healthy-looking tree. The thing to think about here is, like Julie said, you know, with storm damage, these trees can definitely get compromised, either if, you know, the root systems are impacted one way or the other, or if they're infested. This photo is from 316 North Dodge Street. This is actually a tree, again, that sustained some damage in last week's storm. This is one that staff noticed when they were out on their 100-plus calls, and they went to just go clean up the branch, and in doing so, our protocol is any, any ash tree that we work on, we bark peel it, we inspect it to see if it is infested, and indeed, this tree is infested. And I have a sample of it here if you want to look at it. And this is a perfectly looking, healthy ash tree. This was not one on our inventory that had any conditions other than fair or good, showing no signs of infestation whatsoever. This is 729 Market Street. This is a good example of, you know, a street tree that, that has some issues either from some mechanical damage in the past, either a mower or a vehicle or some kind of piece of equipment damaged that tree. You can see in the background, there's a driveway, there's a street, and there's a sidewalk. That tree has some compromised structural integrity at the root system. These are the things that we look for as far as judging what makes a good tree a good tree, or, or one that, you know, should get removed. This is one that's on our current contract because it also is showing signs of infestation.
All right, so back to what our focus has been on overall tree canopy, and it has been on planting and diversity. This shows again the number of tree removals versus tree plantings. I also want to bring out again that EAB isn't the only tree villain out there right now. These are other things that are affecting our trees now and will be soon. The gypsy moth, the Asian longhorn beetle, bur oak blight, oak wilt. So other than ash trees, we have these other things headed our way. Our forestry staff is just as concerned about these as Emerald Ash Bore. But let's talk specifically about Emerald Ash Bore since that's what we had specific questions about. Walk you through some of the management options, and there are lots of options, and we want to make it clear that whatever it likes to do, we'll do. We want to, you know, give you our recommendation, but in the end, obviously, if you want us to treat more or treat less, we will. The management options on the left, that used to be that you got, you identified Emerald Ash Bore in one tree, and you clear-cut all the ash trees in the area. That's a very, from very early on in the 2000s that they did that. There are not many communities that are doing that anymore, and that has never been the case here or the plan here. The middle option, the remove as they deteriorate, is what we've been doing. We remove and then we replant in similar or close location nearby with a different species of trees. That only, not only gives us diversity of species, it gives us diversity of age of trees along those streets. So I've heard, you know, there's a lot of people concerned, we're going to lose the ash trees, it's going to take, you know, 50, 100 years to grow back true. But you know what? Back in 2002, we started planting, or 2004, we started planting other trees to get ready for this. So we already have some that are 12, 15 years old, so it won't be forever. And then there is the option for chemically treating ash trees. There's also chemical treatment options available for these other types of trees. We estimate, and we'll go through all the data from the tree inventory, or some of it, in a little bit, but to treat the, the trees that are good candidates for treatment in all of our street trees and parks is about, we estimate about $50,000 a year, and that's just a really rough estimate, and that wouldn't be needed to be repeated every two to three We looked into research, we'd gotten some from John, some from the mayor. We looked at some studies from Michigan State, and there's a lot of information growing out there about chemical treatment. As a staff, we still don't recommend it as a wholesale option for the entire city. I think it's a good option for some, you know, if people want to do it to their own trees, I don't have a problem with that. But we have some concerns about doing it on a large scale, and that is, as we talk about use of city resources, we really are going towards that diversification, so the remove and replant with a broad spectrum of trees. We're worried about some of the environmental impact on pollinators and other species. It's been studied, and there's more studies coming out every day. So what I tell you tonight could change tomorrow, but I'm just not sure there's quite enough out there. It's a commitment, it's a long-term treatment plant, plan, sorry, of all the cities that are using it, they've all, we've talked with them, and they see it as a stopgap measure. So they're going to treat these to hold off so that they can spread out the removal of ash trees, and I get that. But just remember, that's only about eight or nine percent of our tree population, and we have other, other things to worry about, too. Once you stop treating an ash tree, it becomes susceptible again for the EAB. It used to be, we thought that it would pass through, you hold off until it passes through. Well, we even talked about, there's been Dutch elm disease found here in the last year. So that's a disease that was here 30 years ago, and it's still active. So we think that Emerald Ash Bore will be similar. What do we do when we, when we take out a tree from the street tree? Just so you know, our forestry staff takes this very, very seriously. Our realms back here, she's the one who tries to contact all of the homeowners before we take out the tree. The one exception would be if it's fallen over on a car, or it's causing a power outage, or there's an emergency. But we try to meet them in person, we make a phone call, or we send a letter. We do, we take lots of steps to make sure that people know their tree's coming out. Just a note, some people get confused about the trees that we work on versus what the utility companies come in and do, and they have their own separate notification process for trees and the utility right-ofaways, and they do their tree removals and everything a little bit different than us. We take a lot of care to make sure the neighbor knows and that they have an option to help pick out what tree they'd like to have replaced there. It doesn't happen immediately. Sometimes it takes six months to a year to get back or to get the, to get the stump Sometimes it takes six months to a year to get back, or to get the stump ground out and get the new tree, but we do go back with a replacement tree. It's also important to know that we notify the property owner, and we ask the property owner to notify any renters in the unit. So, sometimes I think maybe some of that is the confusion. The renter may not get the message from us, they should be getting it from their landlord, and we don't know that that always happens. Briefly, here's some examples of what other cities are doing. There is a whole range of treat versus not treat, and it's changing every day. Minneapolis was one of the first ones where EAB was discovered, so of course, they clear-cut their trees. But you can see in the other cities that there are a number of different options and different strategies happening. We know that our neighbors, Cedar Rapids is treating some, Corralville is treating some, but like I said, both of them have said they see it as a measure to hold off having to replace those trees, but they think they're going to have to replace them eventually, at some point, anyway. We were also asked to look at Grand Rapids, Michigan, and they're what they do, and so I'll have Zach talk about that.
Yeah, so, Grand Rapids discovered EAB in 2007. They did windshield inventory of their ash trees, and at that time, in 2008, they had 8,000 ash trees, and they first started to trunk-inject ash trees with triage, which is the commercial name, or imamectum benzoate, which is the preferred method. And at that time, they were treating about 3,000 trees total, so alternating years, keep that in mind. And so, fast forward to 2016, they completed their inventory, they had 86,000 trees total, 6,000 ash trees in that eight-year time period were removed due to an EAB infestation, even as they were treating. And so, essentially, they have, right now, they have 2,000 ash trees left, and they're treating approximately 700 trees a year, so alternating years. And for staff comparison, Grand Rapids has a forestry budget of $2 million with a staff of 12 full-time equivalents and six part-time equivalents. Iowa City has a forestry budget of $646,000 with a staff of five full-time equivalents and one part-time equivalent. Lessons learned from Grand Rapids are their experience. It's not worth it to tree-to-tree nine inches or less in diameter, and it's really not worth it to tree-to-tree 35 inches in diameter or larger. Essentially, trees are like big straws, and so, the larger the straw, the more uptake it has, or energy it has to try and uptake that chemical. The other reason being that urban trees have a certain lifespan, and a 35-inch or greater tree is starting to reach its natural lifespan within an urban setting. And unfortunately, those are the iconic neighborhood trees that we're talking about. And in their experience, treatment is for the life of the tree.
So, we'd like $2 million next year, just saying. So, let me take you through a few more slides about our tree inventory. Everybody's been anxious. We've done a tree inventory over the last year and a half. We have some of the data. First of all, people want to know, will it be available online? The answer is yes. We're still working out some glitches in the software, so our goal is by the end of the year, hopefully sooner. But the tree inventory includes a location, the size, the type of tree, and we can visualize its environmental impact, and then a classification of condition. And I just want to warn you, because it is, they are based upon, you know, fair and poor and all that, but it was on the day of the survey, and this EAB is hitting us so fast that a tree that we judged as being good a month ago might not be when we actually peel away some of the bark and see the damage underneath. But anyway, let me show you, first of all, you've seen this slide in a different version. These are all the ash trees throughout the city, about 3,500 out of the 45,000 trees that were included in the overall survey. These are the trees, ash trees that were judged to be in marginal health, so not ready to be taken down yet, but to be watched. And I'll go back through these, so you can look at them again. These are poor health ash trees. These are ones that we're currently in the process of taking down because we feel like they are public safety hazards. Of all of these ash trees, when you take into consideration the ones that are greater than, I'm going to get this right here, greater than nine inches and less than 35, and in good condition at this time, these are the ones that we feel would be eligible for chemical treatment if you wish to go down that route, which is where we got the $50,000 estimate, was taking into account the size and location of these trees. Not necessarily our recommendation, but presented to you as an option, that these are the ones that we feel at this point in time could get treatment and could be delayed. And the only other thing I'll show you is, we also have a lot of tree planting going on, and these are the areas that are getting current tree planting happening. Granted, not in the areas of the ash concentrations right now, because that doesn't show up on here, because as we take each of those ash trees, or each of the diseased trees out, they get replaced one-on-one. That's different from our larger tree planting projects that you see here. So, this is in addition to replacing any tree that's taken out of the streetway. So, there's all the ash trees, again, the ones deemed marginal, which you can see is most of them. And then the poor health, these are the ones that are on their way out right now, and then potentially ones that could be treated. So, that is just a whole lot of information for you, and we will do our best to answer any questions that you may have.
What is the cost per tree removal, and what is the cost per tree for chemical treatment?
That's a great question, and it's, I will say, and this is a hard question, it's pretty nebulous, because each tree is different. As you saw with the 1324 Davenport Street example, there's power lines, there's transformers, there's a whole host of targets and obstacles. So, to put an average price of removal on a given tree is, that's a hard estimate. As far as the treatment, what we have got from True Green, who is treating for the city of Corralville, approximately $6 per diameter inch as far as the treatment cost. So, if you have a 20-inch diameter tree, $6 per diameter inch, you factor that out every two years. So, we could go through, we can get some better numbers as far as what our average cost is for what we've had on our contract lately, but as again, it's pretty nebulous.
Yeah. I know you can't give us exact numbers, but could it be as high as $12,000 per tree in certain instances?
Absolutely, depending on the obstacles.
It could be, but remember, we're taking them out because they're a safety hazard. We're not taking them out because it's an option, you know, a budget option. It's a, it has to come out, or someone's car is going to get hit, or worse. Go ahead.
And I just want to say, when Julie talks about a safety hazard, I've experienced this firsthand in other communities that I've worked in. You know, we had an example in Rock Island this last July, where a tree branch fell out and killed two people and injured three. So, this is not something that we just are cavalier about.
How do you make that determination when it goes from kind of good to bad enough that you're determining it's a safety hazard? I mean, how much of the canopy is gone, or how do you decide that?
Well, we look at all those things. We look at if we actually visually see the ashbore, we see damage to the tree. We also take in consideration where the tree is. So, if you notice, right before Ragbury, three large ash trees came out on Washington Street. We looked at those about a month before Ragbury came in and said, wow, this could really be a problem. All of a sudden, there was enough dead branches up high that we were really worried something might fall on someone, knowing there was going to be pedestrians underneath. So, it's a combination, and we have to make some best guesses, but it's, I'll let you talk a little bit more about how we decide that.
Sure. What I can say is decades of experience. You know, our forestry staff is very credentialed. We have certified arborists on SAD, a number of our certified arborists, municipal arborists. We have staff members that have gone through the tree risk assessment qualifications through our governing body, the International Society of Arboriculture. So, we look, as Julie said, we look at factors as far as the upper canopy, as far as the root system. You know, the example at 724 Market Street that I showed with that mechanical damage at the base, I mean, that's where you start. You start at the roots, and you work your way up and see what's, you know, what's affecting it. So, you know, rule of thumb, as far as an industry standard, you know, 2/3 of a canopy of a tree, if that's healthy, then that's something that we can look at preserving or saving, or pruning out the dead and seeing what happens, and monitoring that.
Unless there's ashbore in the dead.
Unless there's emerald ashbore in the tree, and that's what we're finding.
So, let's say for private property owners, you know, as people are watching this and saying, okay, I've got ash trees on my property, and not worry about the city. What would you tell somebody, let's say that canopy's pretty good on a tree, is it worth, do you think it's worth it for them if they care about that tree, and it's within those diameter parameters that you gave, if they chose to want to treat it, that that's a reasonable thing for them to think about doing?
I think it's certainly an option for them, and it's on a much smaller scale than what we might be talking about citywide. I don't, the studies are changing and coming out every day, so effectiveness, that's changing as new products come out. To try it for one tree in the backyard, probably worth it, but that would be an individual choice.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess when I ask you, are you planning to take all the ash trees regardless of their effect?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We are only taking the ash trees down for two reasons. Either because they're showing signs of decline and become a public safety hazard, or in a few cases, they come out because of a public infrastructure project. That's the only, we aren't just going down a street and saying, there's an ash tree, take it out. It's only if it's showing the signs of decay and decline.
Okay, and earlier, you showed us a tree that have one branch that had affected, but the rest of the tree look really great and nice. Is there any way, I don't know, but is that, can they take only that bar, like that branch, and still leave the tree on, or this is not something could be possible?
We try that on some cases. However, with emerald ashbore, because you don't see the damage until it's opened up so you can see inside the tree, you don't often know that it's been infected, and once you have that clue from one branch coming down, we have some, it's really heavy wood, and it's really dangerous. So, that's why we take it out. Other trees, yes, we regularly prune and try to save trees. Our staff would like nothing better than to save all the trees if we possibly could. But emerald ashbore is a little bit different animal, and it doesn't quite work that way.
And my last question is, during the, you know, last, all the trees that has been fall last week, I know that there is many of them had been, but all of them fall off because of something, or some of them are really good trees, but because of the wind, it can happen, I guess.
We had 80 mile an hour winds, which is highly unusual, so yeah, some trees we lost just because of the unusual winds. It's just that if they have other damage or are aged, they are susceptible to it more so than if we can keep them healthy.
Sure.
Is there any method to notify private homeowners that have an ash tree on their property as such? Because it sounds like it can be contagious, so if they're not aware of it, or not concerned about it?
There's lots of information available on various websites, IDALs and the DNR website, I believe. Ours has some. We don't go on private property. We will answer questions all the time about it, but we don't actually go on private property to give an opinion. There's lots of sort of arborists in the community that will do that.
I'm curious, and this may be a question for the state, gentlemen. Of the 10 metro areas in the state of Iowa, what percentage are chemically treating? Because I think we know at least Cedar Rapids is chemically treating. I don't know if Corralville qualifies as a top 10, but Des Moines is treating, Davenport is treating. Am I understanding that correctly?
Could you?
Yeah.
Small proportion, yeah.
If you could, okay. So, at least we know that Davenport, Corralville, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, they're all chemically treating?
Some treatment is going on, and again, it's to kind of delay and stage the removal, because there comes a point to where you're dealing with just so many massive amount of trees, that it takes a role of burden on the city staff to keep up. And of course, some of those people want to preserve certain trees, too, at a park or city hall, or wherever it be. Some of those ash trees have importance, so.
So, one of the concerns, as you know, has to do with neighborhoods that have large numbers of ash trees lining the streets, and worry about, I think quite legitimate worry, that once those trees come down, that the streetscape will be, if you will, denuded. And it will dramatically undermine the apparent quality of the neighborhoods, and I think you all are totally aware of that. So, it's making me wonder about the 400 or so trees you say, at the moment, you think could be treated, and that would be up to us to give you a go-ahead on that, but there might be others. But I'm wondering about sort of the strategic intervention, because there are other trees, a large number of them apparently, that you say are marginal, but you don't really know how marginal, right? So, maybe they could be treated successfully for years, maybe not.
We would recommend the marginal actually aren't candidates for treatment. So, really, we would only recommend those 400 or so, and that's only with another survey of them before we start treatment to make sure that it hasn't changed. So, we agree, there's neighborhoods that are going to look very different, and we are as sad about that as, well, maybe not quite as the neighbors right there, but we get it, that is going to be a big change. I just would offer, though, that chemical treatment is going to push it down the road 10 or 15 years, but indeed, you could be dealing with the same thing at that point if you would decide not to treat, or didn't have the funding to treat at that time. I would just encourage starting the process, no matter what we do, of getting some other, some trees planted in there so that we have, the more years we can on those replacement trees, the sooner. I mean, they always say the best day to plant a tree was, what, 50 years ago, or the next best day is tomorrow? So, and I didn't quite get that quote right, but, you know, the sooner we get to replanting, I think the better off we'll be.
So, I guess my general sense is that your overall strategy seems completely reasonable, and obviously, it's very well thought out, and it's based on everything you all know and everybody who you work with, including Mike from the DNR, right? And, I'm sorry.
I'm from agriculture.
Oh, sorry, I have a Department of Agriculture. So, I don't want to challenge any of that whatsoever, but I do want to be, I think we need to do what we can to conserve the ash trees that we can conserve. I gather it's, especially since the literature, the scientific literature about this is changing daily, apparently, or at least very rapidly. I think we need to position ourselves so that we are chemically treating some reasonable number of trees, maybe 400 is a totally reasonable number, given what you said, to buy time, and to preserve the canopy while other trees are being planted, and that kind of thing. So, that's my gut sense, and I think if we don't do that, that we'll be doing the city a disservice. So, I know that it's, I mean, I've talked to a bunch of people about this. This is a painful thing if these trees all go away, right? But that's what I, my own gut sense is what I've just tried to articulate. I don't know if others have anything they want to say.
You know, I've been looking at this since I asked for the work session, so about a month now, and I did send out to all of you.
While you're talking, John, I got to note that we're going to have to stop in no more than six minutes.
Yeah, well, we had, we waited a long time before we had a chance to comment, unfortunately, but, and I don't mean that you took too long, but this is an important issue. So, I just want to briefly highlight some of the things that I uncovered, some of which have been mentioned. Certain trunk injections, which is, seems to be the preferred approach, has up to a 99% success rate. One thing that hasn't been spoken about by staff, which is in the bulletin that I sent to council, was that, and which was very interesting to me, the treatment can be effective with ash trees with low levels of EAB infection. Trees retaining up to 50% of their canopy and foliage can respond to treatment. So, that's a very important data point in my mind, with respect to this, setting aside all the mechanical issues, just strictly looking at EAB. There also have been advances in the treatment that significantly reduce the cost per tree. I just learned in the last couple of weeks, and this is all, it's a dynamic environment in terms of the research. in terms of the research, that the application rate with this preferred treatment and a certain product has gone from two years to three. So that makes a big difference in terms of the application cost. So, all those highlights, plus as has been noted, this is a curve where we're just at the beginning of the wave. And when the wave hits, I'm pretty convinced it's going to overwhelm our ability to respond to it. So that notion that, yeah, we're trying to buy ourselves time is absolutely right. Imagine 3,500 trees. I don't know what percentage of those trees are going to come down or, you know, require that will be at beyond the point of treatment that will need to be taken down. How effectively we'll be able to deal with that? I'm concerned that we would not be able to deal with it and we'd have a lot of dead trees that are then even more likely to be a safety hazard. So, the idea of buying time, I think, is absolutely essential. And we're buying time preserving the canopy, which is, you know, has value, tremendous value. It's great we're replanting, but, you know, one for one, you know, it takes 20 years to reestablish the canopy. So I do think, I'll just quickly end by saying, I think we do need to start the chemical treatment. I think we need to confirm that our inventory reflects that 50%, setting aside the, any mechanical damage. I do think we need to ramp up the public information piece of this because of the impact. And, you know, I'm happy we're developing a tree advisory board as we move forward and that they explore ways of engaging the community to partner with the city. I understand the cost issues, but I also understand there are a lot of people in the city who are interested in ways to help pay for that, should that be an issue. So those are my main concerns.
With these streets that are like fully lined with the ash trees right now, which I think to me is the biggest consideration, what are the options and what can we do in terms of starting to plant replacement trees now even before those ash trees come out? And I realize you run the risk of damaging those trees if the ash trees fall and aren't taken out purposefully.
It's already naturally happening to some extent, because as I said, we're taking out the ash trees as they become non-viable, as they become hazards. So we're not going into taking out the whole street at any one point. We're already doing that. We're taking out, we're taking out a tree here and there and replanting to give you that varied streetscape from that point on.
I guess here's my question, let me rephrase it. If we were to start treating, okay, and if that did delay having to remove some of these trees, is it possible in the meantime to start putting in replacement trees to give them a few years' growth? I realize you're still not getting the 20 years or 30 years growth you'd like, but so that it's not such a drastic change when more of these ash trees have to come out?
I think it's possible. That's been the whole goal of why we've been doing this since 2004. The only thing I would say by delaying on the ash trees, we're just likely to bump into whatever the next tree disease is too. So just keep that in mind. Like I said, this isn't the only thing that we're worried about in the tree canopy. And I know that there's neighborhoods where this is huge, I get that. We deal with neighborhoods all over the community and some have all maple trees, some have all, I mean, until we get everything diversified, we're going to keep having this conversation every five or 10 years. It may be a different tree, but we're still going to have this conversation of it's going drastically change the landscape until we get to a point where our street trees have a diverse makeup to them.
Jim, can I say one thing quick?
Yeah.
I think there's three issues. We have the poor trees that present a clear and present danger. I think obviously staff has to have the authority for that, to remove them as they see fit. We have the healthy trees. I would like to see those begin chemical treatment to prevent the infestation. And as to the marginal trees, I think John had talked about the 50% and/or direct staff to consider what the other comparable communities, the top 10 metro areas in the state of Iowa are doing to address the marginal trees. So that's what I think would be a good way to go forward. Healthy trees treat, poor trees remove, marginal trees study further, consulting the other top 10 cities.
I think what struck me the most, the comment you made was with treating, it will give us just 10 to 15 years. But I think 10 to 15 years is a good time span and including especially if you're planting in the meantime new trees that are going to be growing within 15 to 20 years. So I would go along with considering a treatment plan.
I also go in with considering treating plant because I think, and also to add, like, I agree with Rockne and Pauline on what, I don't want to repeat it, but I think, yeah, planting another trees at the same time while you are treating those trees, well, like for 10 years or 20 years, that tree will be growing. And if you cut this down, we still have like a growing tree present, which is not losing something. But any trees that's really a safety concern have to come out regardless, you know, that because of safety reason. But the trees that look good and can be treated, why not?
I think you're hearing support for treating, chemically treating some number of trees, the ones that are in best shape or in most eligible, I think you called it. But the overall framework that you've outlined, I think we support what you're trying to do, because it makes a lot of sense in general. But we want, I think, tell me if I'm wrong, we want you to move ahead with some chemical treatment on some of these ash trees. So you've got to have a strategy laid out for doing that and taking into account the kinds of concerns that we've addressed in our questions to you.
I would just qualify. I would not go with the chemical treatment. I think what staff has said in the fact that this is just going to be coming up repeatedly. What are we going to do when it's the maple trees? What are we going to do when it's the oak trees? This, I think, is going to be kind of a never-ending process. The fact that they're not all going at once as it is, and the question is, you know, with the treatment, are you delaying all those trees that you treat? Are we going to be looking at all those and just coming down in 10 years? So are we still going to have a massive number that come down at one time because the treatment's no longer working? Obviously, we don't, we don't know. We'll see what happens. I think staff has a good plan. I think it's money that we have, I would say, a lot better uses for. I would, given that it is the majority of council that wants to move forward this, I would encourage staff to look very, very strategically at which trees you decide to treat in terms of primarily where we have entire streets. You know, where, I guess I would even say, if you got, if you have a healthy ash somewhere and it's the only ash, I wouldn't even waste, personally, I wouldn't waste my time on, I'd let it go. Only where you have whole rows of them down, you know, street, that whole street, then if that's what we're going to do, then that, to me, that's where the priority would be, in which case maybe we don't do all 400. Maybe you pick 200 or 250 that are kind of the key streets to minimize some of that cost, because we're, I'm just, I'm not convinced that the treating, while it's going to push it down the road, is necessarily going to spread it out. I guess that's my point.
Anybody else want to say anything within the space of one minute?
I think we're still ambiguous as to direction on marginal trees. So we have the healthy treat or that we'll remove, but the marginal seems to be what direction we have there.
I would voice a big concern about the 50% at this point. I just think most of our trees are overhanging streets and sidewalks. And we'll watch the research, of course, but at this point, I don't know that you want to take the risk if a tree is half-dead with Emerald Ashbore.
Well, up to 50%. You know, I've seen trees which, based on, you know, your removal contract, observationally are not near 50%. So, that's the kind of thing that I'm concerned about, that the infestation alone does not mean we've lost the tree.
I'll give you an example. We had the winds last week, okay? My daughter has a house in town that has tenants in it. They called me at 2:30 in the afternoon that the city, they thought the city dump trucks are out there, you know, trash. Why are they picking up trash today? They looked out, no. It was the city crews. There was a huge limb from this tree, which I didn't realize was an ash tree, I do now, that was in the street. And so it is, the tree is actually on private property, but the tree was, the limb was way out in the middle of the street. This is a huge tree. I would suggest to you that as I stood there and looked at that tree after I'd gone out and crews had left, there is not a lot of the canopy that's gone out of that tree. There are certain branches, but there was one key limb that came down and fortunately nobody was hurt. But it was just interesting to see, you know, and I realize there were significant winds, but the damage that can happen from these, and when they do start to be compromised, and even though you don't necessarily realize potentially how much they're compromised, I would totally agree with staff that when you're looking at these trees and see them as being marginal, they can be a significant safety hazard.
All right. Well, we have run out of time and I think maybe we're ambiguous about certain components of this. I don't think there's support, Rockne, for sort of trying to do something about all of the marginal trees, because apparently it's a very large number. You know, I try to think about the cost of treating a very large number of ash trees. I don't, that doesn't sound viable to me. If there's a way to kind of identify trees that are, you know, less marginal than others, then I'd have some interest in doing something with them. But I definitely think we need to treat the trees you've identified, and we need to be strategic. I think Susan's exactly right about that in terms of canopy along street blocks, along street box. But if there's support for what I've just said, then we can move ahead. And I know there's, it's not perfect, but we're not going to be able to talk about it anymore tonight, at least not at this moment.
I agree with you, but I really agree with Susan of like, we have to be strategic. If it's only one tree on the street and it's not going to cause, like, really, you know, still there is many trees there, and we, why should we treat that? We can just take it off and plant another trees. Since there is many trees on the street, I guess we just have to be strategic in doing this.
One thing I just want to add, and I think it's important, is that on the questions of the one tree, one aspect of this is, and I understand we do not oppose residents paying for treatment themselves within the public right of way, correct?
That is correct. We don't track it either, though.
Yeah, so I think that needs to be made known to the residents and the community, because that would be an option if they understood that it was an option. I don't know that many residents understand that they can do this. And this is what, again, some cities are doing, you know? In fact, they're guaranteeing the price on residents doing it on their own initiative. So I think empowering residents to become engaged with this, you know, I think is another piece of the strategy.
Okay. Zach, Julie, thanks for helping us work our way through this painful but important challenge, helping us process it. Now, I want to say, darn it, I said we were going to get the three topics tonight and then be able to discuss our questions about the formal meeting agenda. We're not going to be able to do those, but I think what we need to do is after our formal meeting, come back, pick up the $15 an hour thing.
I don't think we can, I guess I think we have to postpone it, because we don't want to keep the people who are came for this until after we done from our meeting. I really propose that to postpone it for next time and please put it the first thing on the agenda, because this is the second time we pushing it and it's not on the first thing on the agenda. But people, they don't have to stay from now until we done from our meeting.
Are there people in the room right now who came for that?
Yes. We have asked me here.
Sorry, Christine.
Weren't we supposed to have more information?
I guess.
You requested more information on council salaries and benefits, not the $15 an hour.
No, also we request like information from city medicine, I guess, how they done it.
Yeah, we can't keep talking right now. But with regard to questions about agenda items, please, all of you, if you have questions that don't involve making a different decision with regard to the item on the consent calendar, please don't bring up those questions during the formal meeting. Let's talk about them afterwards when we revisit our work session. If you want to vote differently on a specific topic on the consent calendar, just say you want to pull it from the consent calendar and we'll vote upon it separately and we could have a normal discussion about it then. Yeah?
Okay. But are we agreeing on postponing this? Because I don't, I said it, but no one said anything.
Are you all ready?
I would support that, yeah. I think it's good.
But you wanted at the top of the.
At the top of the next. Do you have a 5 o'clock meeting with the Board of Supervisors at your next work session? So unless you want to start at 4:30 or 4, it would be the second item.
Well, yeah, so it'd have to be the second item.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we're agreed about that. Yeah, all right. So we're adjourned from the work session, we'll come back to it after the formal meeting. About the agenda items that, you know, we want to follow up on?
I just really want to touch base on item 8A and asking about what the current deer management policy that we have, like here.
We do not have a deer management policy that I'm aware of.
Years ago, before I was here, the city had an active deer management program which involved annual sharpshooting. The program was discontinued 2010, 2010, and has not resumed. This past winter, we did a count. We hired the company that used to do the sharpshooting for us to do a count, and that count verified that the population had grown to the level that it was when we started the previous program 17, 18 years ago, whenever that was. The conversation from that point forward has been what to do next. A quick recap of that is the city applied to the state for a sharpshooting authorization that was denied. And amongst other things, we were told to go back and do more community engagement, which led to the forum and some of the comments that you're getting now.
So we haven't received, we have not yet received a summary of comments at the deer forum. Were you planning to provide?
Correct. We'll come back to you before we go back to the state. Share that information with you and then get confirmation from you that you still want to go that route, or if you want to course correct and go some other route, we'll help you get there too.
Okay.
And the second one is 8B. I agree with Rockne that we, even though he gonna talk about this, but I agree with him, we need to like have discussion about that. And my third one will be AD, the letter from Mary about traffic lights. I think Mary, she did this because of course she had, either she saw something there or she had her investigation. And she sat down there, maybe like monitoring the street and everything for the, you know, the traffic, the timing, traffic lights. And I guess suggest that, you know, the staff to do an investigation on this. So if we need improved for the time.
What was the intersection again? Do you remember?
Muscatine, I'm First Avenue.
We have Kent Ralston and the MPO team looking into it, and I've asked Kent already to respond to Mary. He probably has already, but they will, they will certainly look at that. And Ms. Mary has written several times about this general geographic area, mostly about bus shelters. We're looking at that as well. We're also looking at a potential mid-block crossing in this area, because if you can picture that area, there's really no mid-block crossings from First all the way down to Scott.
Right.
So we're trying to locate one that would also accommodate a bus shelter and help some of the pedestrian flow in that area.
That's great that you are doing that, yeah. Thanks. That's all for me.
Let's hang with 8B a little bit, which really connects with Rockne's request that we have a work session focused on follow-up to the Kinnick House situation. I went out there a few days ago to look at the site, because I have not, had not seen the building. And, you know, it's pretty much finished. I just saw it when it was, construction had begun. And while I was, you know, I took a couple photographs, and while I was out there, I ran into Tim Hennessy and Jan Rehm, who are two of our building inspectors. And they were checking their, the construction site to see if it conforms with our, with our city code and with the building permit. So they were doing what we would want them to do, you know? And one of the things I observed while I was out there and was that they were looking at the paving and observing. at the paving and observed that the amount of paving that had been placed on the property was exceeded what was called for in the building permit. So he was saying to the, I don't know, the construction manager or whatever, the young man who was there that was working for the property owner, he was saying to that person that he would have, he had two choices. He could either remove some of the concrete sort of in the northwest corner to make it look just like the original, like what the permit required, or he could remove some, he could conform with the building, with the code as it was amended a few months ago and that would permit him to remove some other piece of concrete instead of the part in the northwest corner. And then we also looked at erosion because there clearly had been some erosion there. We looked at the southwest corner. There was a pipe coming out underground from the neighboring property, but the pipe was directly to the south of the, of the Kinnick House owner's property, so something's going to have to be done with that. And then we looked at the east side where that, there was a video was made of water pouring down on, just on the east side of the Kinnick property. And it was very clear that Tim saw that something was not right and that something would have to be adjusted there to control that kind of erosion. And one of, the last thing was that someone in some communication we'd received indicated that a sidewalk used to go down the east side of the property to very close to where the train railroad line is. And that seems not to have been the case. There was a path going down and maybe some steps of some kind or other, but there wasn't a sidewalk. So anyhow, there were conversations like that that Tim Hennessy and Jan Rehm were involved with, with the construction manager. And I assume, I hope this is true, that we're going to get a report of some kind back through you, I suppose, Jeff, about this, about the, whether they, the construction complied with the code and building permit, if not, what the remedies are.
Yeah. Our intention is to provide a response to the neighbors who have been asking questions and then I would include a copy of that in the information packet. Presumably it will be ready for this Thursday's information packet.
Okay.
Okay, that approach.
Yeah, good deal. So back to your point, Rockne, can you be clear about what you want us to do in the work session?
Yes, I can be clear on that. I do want to review how the stormwater and sensitive slope area, sensitive area ordinances were applied in this particular case and to determine whether we need to make any modifications to that. I encourage everyone to go out and look for themselves while, of course, respecting the property boundary. It's, I believe it's a city right of way extending down through the slope and the residents showed me some significant streams of water that were going down the hillside. And when I'd asked them very specifically, had you ever witnessed that before? And the opinion was unanimous that, that they had not and that they believed it was a function of so much cement, and maybe that'll be fixed by the cement, I don't know, but it's a function of the cement being there that they can't soak up the water. So I think we need to at least revisit that because this was built to code. And so if we have to maybe tweak the code or maybe look at some issues related to that, I want to evaluate that. The third thing is, relates to, we haven't, there were several different proposals that were made to us originally when we had that work session. And there were several things we discussed, a tripwire, we discussed, you know, possible issues, for example, like for example, if there was a replacement structure that was a certain square footage above the existing structures, would there be a tripwire for purposes of notifying adjacent neighbors? We discussed some multiple other ones that we really haven't followed up on, at least I don't recall that we have. Some of these issues have been already addressed with the unrelated occupancy, for example, made some changes in terms of cement and backyard. So some of those have already been followed up with. But I think a 20-minute work session, six months off into the future, would be good to revisit some of these issues because I'm not convinced that all of the issues and that we can't address all of them. But I think that there are some unremaining issues that we have not adequately addressed. And I think the final thing would be related to whether we need to have site plans for certain size, single-family dwellings, because it's my understanding that we do not at this point. And that's something that's been debated over the years and so we could explore that. If there's a major square footage, single-family residential structure, do we need to have site plan and site plan review of that by council? So these are things that I bring up. I can get more targeted in terms of sharing my concerns with you and with Jeff. This would be something six months off into the future. I'm hoping that we can get some additional feedback from the residents. I can definitely say they're in the mindset of not looking back. They're not looking back to what happened. They are looking forward in terms of future solutions. Because I do think that this particular structure, none of us really would have anticipated that we would have a structure like this. And we need to, we need to make sure that we, that something like it doesn't happen again because I don't think it's consistent with residential neighborhood.
If we're going to do something like that, my, my biggest concern is structuring it in a way that we're specifically looking forward.
Clearly, yes.
Because there was litigation involved there. That was settled. And any conversations I've had since then, I think I'm not convinced that they are quite yet able to completely look forward. And I think the discussion needs to be not about this house at all, per se, in terms of, you talked about, you know, how, how the stormwater ordinance was, was handled or how sensitive areas ordinance. I think we should stay away from how any of that was done because I don't know how you talk about that without basically getting back into the litigation of whether staff did their job or not. So I think if we're going to have those discussions, it needs to be in the general sense of, yeah, if there's going to be a single-family home over so many square feet on one level, do we think there should be site plans? If there, we've talked kind of in general, like if there's going to be a house that's, you know, bigger than one and a half or two times the average square footage of houses in the neighborhood, do we have some special criteria or something like that? So.
Yeah, I think we could do that. I do though, think there are some specific things relating to that that are very interesting, shall we say, if you go out and observe. So I don't know, we're going to do a memo on that and we're following up on some of those concerns. So at least my contact with the neighbors, they were very forward-looking and I think they've finally let go of what had happened in the past.
What did the rest of you think?
I think the, yeah, I agree with the notion that this should be forward-moving, first of all. Because I went out there as well and the project is still in construction, so it's very difficult to know what to think because we just don't know what was in the contract. And so there's, it's unfinished, you know, so it's, it's hard to gauge what's going on. But I, but I do think with respect to the zoning issues and then also the stormwater drainage, because I did notice that from what I could tell, and again, it's in construction, I don't know what the final outcome will be, but it appeared that the stormwater from Lusk, as a cul-de-sac, you know, it deadends into the natural area and the stormwater, from what I could see, just runs off that street into the natural area. That's a lot.
A portion of the neighborhood runs, a good portion of the neighborhood drains into that area.
Yeah, so if there's water coming to Lusk and then down Lusk, it just leaves the pavement and goes right on to the natural area. So that, that's completely unrelated to the project, but seems to be a major point source of stormwater runoff coming down into that natural area. So that, so that kind of thing.
So that's a remedy kind of thing. That's one of the points I was making when I asked Jeff whether, whether we're going to get a report from staff about that because Tim Hennessy wasn't looking at that and trying to ask, well, answer the question, well, what can be done about this because it's not adequate the way it is? I didn't mean, sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you, John.
So that may be a general issue, you know, beyond the condition at the end of Lusk Street that, you know, where we have these interfaces with natural areas, how are we addressing the stormwater, water, stormwater runoff that is generated, not just on-site, but by possibly the adjacent streets?
Y'all have thoughts? Do you know what you, do you want to say anything?
Well, I think whoever pointed out, I remember it was Rockne or John, that we hadn't really followed up on some of those points that we said we were going to talk about that perhaps might, yeah, that perhaps might have or should have gone differently. So I think a continued discussion about it or.
Terms of solutions.
Right, right, of how we could prevent such things. But, but again, putting this in, in the past. It's done, it's over, but look at how we can avoid similar situations.
Well, it sounds to me like there's support for having a work session, so may, I don't know, maybe six months in the future?
Yeah, I think that's fine with me and I'll reach out to the residents.
Yeah, and we'll, I want to be clear about what the purpose of it is and, because we were pretty thorough the last time and dedicated a lot of time to that particular topic. So things are just different now and we want to revisit it a little bit, is what I hear you saying, and be looking forward and.
Yeah, I mean, we were thorough, but we didn't really do a lot of things that we talked about, is my recollection, but.
That's one of the things we'll have to revisit.
That's the follow-up.
Any other agenda items? Moving on to the info packet for August the 23rd. Thanks for the traffic stop analysis PowerPoint. Thanks to the staff for that. I will say that when I went through it, that I found myself being confused because it seems very clear that the PowerPoint text assumed that the speaker would fill in all sorts of blanks, fill in all sorts of information. So by itself, it was kind of difficult to track.
Yeah. Council had requested a memo from the chief, I believe with some questions you had, Mazza here. He has submitted that to me. I'm going to try to get that in this next packet. If not, it'll be in the one after that.
I really, you know, I was trying to talk about that, which is IB2 for traffic stop study. You know, I went it many times, looking at it, and I don't know if you guys remember this, where, you know, disparity plus like number of stop, and this is, the red light is on two. And I think the goal should be this red line moving to one, so we can reduce that because this is really clear, the study showing that there is more people of color being stopped. And also talking about the police is spending more time on, like a certain neighborhood and the study showing that, which is we need to have, I'm just proposing that we need to have a serious discussion about that. I know that, you know, our chief, police chief, he's doing great job in trying to, you know, eliminate that kind of things, but more discussion on this topic. Invite the CPRB on the discussion too. And just like having a work session, I don't know how you can do it, but we need to do more discussion about that and lay out a plan to move this line to number one.
I think you draw attention to an important topic, Maz. I also remember that Chief Matherley, who showed great patience in sitting out here in the audience for a long time.
Yes.
Made a presentation to us about a year ago about his plan, strategic plan for the department. And he went into great detail about the actions that he's undertaking and that the department as a whole will undertake in the future. Now, he did this a year ago. And I can tell you, it was pretty darn impressive. So maybe it'd be good to revisit that or just as a starting point, Jeff, I think it'd be really good if, if you could share that, the chief's presentation or strategic plan, that thing that I'm referring to, share it with us again, especially for Maz because she has, she wasn't here when that conversation took place.
I think another important thing is Dr. Barnum talked about the fact that they were collecting data to reestablish the baselines because he really felt that those baselines might be out of whack.
Populations change.
The population's changed so much and so that really might not be at two. It might be at one and three quarters or one and a half or whatever. So I think, I think we really need to see what that is as well.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, we, the only thing that I'm requesting to just have, like put more attention on that and try to figure out what we can do about it, talk about it, yeah.
Is that a work session item or am I just putting the memo in the strap plan in the next info packet?
Just do the memo at this point.
If you could just give us the memo and then Maz, if you, once you have a chance to read through that.
We can see if we need, yes.
If you think we should follow up in some way, just let us.
Yeah, sound good to me.
Okay.
I want to say something about items IP4 and 5, which is the listing post update and the summary report for the one that took place on the 16th of August. So we need to schedule one more listing post for the year, probably in early to mid-November. I'd like to suggest we do it at Weber Elementary. Because that would connect us with the far west side, which is something we've not done before. So Kelly, if you could find some way to contact the school board or work with Jeff or Simon or somebody to see if we can have access to Weber School, that'd be great. Unless you all would prefer some other place, I shouldn't be assuming too much here.
It's fine, we haven't done one that far west. Can't get much further.
I'd like to volunteer to take part in that.
I haven't done any since I came.
Well, there you go. Yeah, okay. So Maz and I could do that?
Sure.
We did have a request to go back to Uptown Bills. Should I just put that on the list of places again?
Yeah, we could do that in, you know, the next one after it.
Okay.
Did you get that from, well, it doesn't matter who you.
Mary Vacy?
Mary Vacy, yeah.
Have you guys done one in the Pheasant Ridge Neighborhood Center? Because you've done one before, it was great, I guess.
Yeah, we did one.
Yeah, that was the first one.
Kingsley and I did.
I think it was me.
You are the one.
No. Yeah, that's right.
It was, it was Rockne, yeah. I just remember right now.
Yeah.
This was good, yeah.
This will be the eighth that we've done.
Oh, really?
In two years. We've done four per year. And we managed to get around the city, which is a key thing. We managed to connect with disadvantaged or marginalized communities, that's a big thing. And it's a matter of judgment and balancing, you know.
I agree.
Yeah, I think going back to Pheasant Ridge, we had a big turnout there too.
Yes, it was, yeah. It was good.
Sure, it would be.
Would be good to do again, so.
Anything else on that packet? How about the August 30th packet?
Okay, so IP2 work session agenda. I do think we left some things unresolved from Emerald Ashport and I would like, we did get, we did not have enough time to speak. There was a wonderful detailed report, but I felt a little cramped in terms of our discussion. So I am asking for council authority for 15 more minutes in the near future to discuss our approach to marginal trees for Emerald Ashport. We may decide that it's not feasible, but I find, I found myself wanting, what's the plan for Correville, Des Moines, not that we're beholden to other cities, but just to explore that. And I, and it may be that we decide no, but I think that's worth 15 more minutes because I felt a little cramped in terms of our time. So do I have support for 15 more minutes?
I definitely felt cramped as well. It's a big, important topic and we just didn't have quite enough time to work our way through it. So I'd support that idea.
Yeah, and it'd be 15, it'd be fine.
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of, kind of interesting how it spilled over into community comment. It did seem like there was more to be said.
Is there a specific date you want that on?
Six weeks.
There's probably no hurry because they're probably not going to start treating till spring from everything I read. It sounds like spring's going to be.
Eight months.
Except budget issue.
There's, there's long procurement processes and workload planning that it would be helpful to have it done earlier. So October, okay?
October would be great.
Yeah. But let's remember as well that at our next, at our meeting on the, what is that, the 18th? When are we meeting? Yeah, on the 18th. Let's make sure that the topic of $15 an hour is the item that takes place immediately after the meeting with the supervisors.
Those will be the only two items on the agenda.
There you go.
Do it one way or another.
Yeah.
For this crowd, we need that, right?
I'm glad.
All right.
Are we starting early or no? Are we starting at, or no?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, okay.
Any other such items?
That's it for me.
Well, while we're, I'm not sure which packet it's in, future work session topics.
It's this one, 20, 25th.
I want to bring up the issue of, this one that we were just checking on dates for on the middle of September to talk about the Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Code. And I guess, I was surprised to hear about it, and I guess I hadn't read all of Jeff's after-council memos carefully enough. And, and the reason is twofold. One, I think before we get into that, we're in the middle of a project that's going to be coming before us.
Hold on, I think there was misunderstanding about what the subject of that meeting would be. Jeff, if you're, if I'm misdating this, please tell me.
Yeah.
My understanding is that that meeting will focus on 12 Court Street-
Okay.
And the height bonuses for 12 Court.
Okay.
As opposed to in general.
And as a part of that, we'll have to have background information about the Riverfront Crossings Plan and about the Form-Based Code and height bonuses that are provided as, are available within the Form-Based Code. That's what I understand.
I, I had a different impression, but that's-
I agree with Jim, if that's what it should be.
Yeah, I, yeah.
But I do have one other thing. We're six here. We're going to have a seventh member. I think we should wait till our seventh member is here.
Yeah.
Wasn't what they were planning anyway, yeah.
I mean, well, no, the dates we were given tentatively for middle of September, we won't have a seventh member until sixth or eighth of October, whenever they do the canvassing of the votes. So I think that work session should be delayed until we have the vacancy filled.
Yeah, and to be clear with Jeff, because you and I haven't had, I'm getting tired, haven't had a chance to talk about this. I had, I know I had said several times that I thought we needed to have a special work session focused on 12 Court Street and height bonuses-
Yep.
-after we did the rezoning. I mean, assuming, assuming we got through the rezoning, I think. I've also said, I think we need to revisit the height bonuses in general. But I don't think we should revisit the height bonuses while the 12 Court Street topic is in play.
Good, you and I are on the same page.
I think that's, that's something that is, was in process. I don't think we should change the rules in the middle.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just, I don't know when the 12 Court will be coming back. It could be several months, it could be a year or more.
But remember, during our lengthy conversations about 12 Court, we were saying things like, we need to send clear signals-
Correct.
-about what our expectations are.
Yeah, I'm really, that's fine if we focus on 12 Court. I just, if you have an intention to bring up the density bonuses and height levels and you, we're under the impression that you are going to get to that in a matter of months, because 12 Court would be resolved, I just, I don't want to leave you with that impression. A project of this scale, for them to prepare the level of detail that they need to come back for Level Two approval, it's going to be closer to a year, if not more than a year, I would guess, before they're ready to come back. That'd be just my, my guess on that. So I just want you to have a realistic time around.
I think, I think there's some, I think there is some worthwhile discussion to be had. And for example, I mean, one of the questions that I would ask at the beginning of that work session is, is there a majority of council members that would agree to four 15-story buildings if all the conditions that they wanted were met? And if we don't have a majority of council members that are even willing to consider four 15-story buildings regardless of conditions, then I think that needs to be conveyed to the developers and before they put in a lot of time and effort if they are going to insist that that is, that they're not going to settle for anything less than that. So I think there's just a couple of things like that that we need to iron out first before we spend a lot of time or they spend a lot of time. Because if, if there is absolutely no middle ground between us and them on the heights of those buildings, then there's no point in spending a lot of time about what the conditions would be. If there is a potential to meet on the heights, then I think we need to spend a considerable amount of time in terms of the conditions that we would want to put in place to agree with, for those height bonuses. And then it's a matter of seeing if, if we can negotiate that with them.
What do you mean by middle ground?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know. I mean, I guess the first question, like I said, in that work session would be, do we have a majority of council members that if the right conditions were in place, would agree to four 15-story buildings?
As presented during the rezoning.
Right, yeah.
And that's why we need to have seven members of our council-
Right.
-I think, which we'll get in weeks.
Right, and so, and so if we have at least four members who say, yeah, you know, if the design is right and, and certain conditions of, of office space, or I want more than 10 years of affordable housing, or whatever it might be, okay? Yeah, if, if we can get all these right conditions, I can agree with four 15-story buildings. Well, then let's start looking at those conditions. If we have a majority of council that says, I don't care what conditions you put in place, I'm not going to support four 15-story buildings, then I think we need to communicate that back to the developer before they put a ton of time and money into designs if they aren't going to accept anything less than four 15-story buildings. Now, maybe they will accept, but I'm just, I think we need to kind of get some of those parameters figured out before anybody on our end or their end spends a ton of time and money.
Sort of threshold questions.
I would start with a different threshold question, which we don't need to talk about right now, but I agree in principle with what you're suggesting. I do think it, what would really be valuable, and this is a good reason for deferring this particular meeting until after our new council member comes on board. A key need is for us to become clear about what the Riverfront Crossings Plan calls for in that general area. And I don't, I don't mean in terms of the mass of the buildings as such, but just to understand that, that sub, what's it called?
Sub-district.
Sub-district of, of the Riverfront Crossings District, what it calls for. And when that was adopted and what the process was used to get to the point where that plan was adopted. And then do the same thing for the River, for the Form-Based Code, which was adopted at a different time. So that people will know, will understand the background, will have a sense of what the, especially with regard to the Form-Based Code, what the allow, what elements would be, I'm getting tired, I can tell.
Forget the bonus and stuff.
Would enable a developer to get a bonus if we approve it. But also the fact that it's up to our discretion. So I think we need collectively that kind of background knowledge, because Susan and I are the only two that went through that process.
You don't have a whole lot of staff that went through that process either, but we'll do our best.
Yeah, it'd be good for everyone, I think.
Good review for all of us.
So I guess we're saying, we, we want to defer this until like mid-October-
Yeah.
And, and to address the topics we've just described. Okay, anything else in that, that packet, which was, I don't know, the 21st or the 30th?
Nope. There's, this kind of relates to work sessions, but I, and I'm not exactly sure how and where to throw this out, so I'm just going to throw it out here. Jim, you mentioned about getting a phone call about Mormon Trek. I am getting, and some of it happened at the Listening Post, I am getting more and more very, very strong concerns and dissatisfaction with the idea of road diets, both on First Avenue and on Mormon Trek. I don't know, and I just, I don't recollect what our timeframe is for Clinton and Gilbert.
Clinton is about two months past due, so it should, it should be done here shortly. And I would like to say that, I've been quite saying that. Gilbert is scheduled to be under full design next year with construction in 2020.
I would really like to see us push Gilbert back a year. And I say this because I really think we need to give this community more time to get used to these changes and see if they are going to be accepting of them. Because I'm hearing more and more people who are super unhappy with this.
But so much of that is the construction, though, I think, on Mormon Trek, don't you think?
Well, but you've got one lane going through, and they're saying at, at the morning time, that thing is backed up down past Melrose going northbound. And that's, and they don't see it being any different, you know, once it's done. I'm just saying, that's not going to be done for a while. I think you're talking major arterials that we're making these changes to, and I think we need to give people more time to either adapt to them and say, yeah, okay, we can move forward with this another, with another one, or to come back to this council and fully reject it before we've done something as major as Gilbert. Or, yeah, so I'm, I just, I wouldn't do Gilbert. I, I would give it at least another year and make sure, I mean, I just, I'm concerned about spending all that money on design and then-
Let's not get into a debate about whether or not we should do Gilbert Street.
I think we need discussion of-
When is Mormon Trek supposed to be done?
Mormon Trek will be done, most of it will be done in the fall. There's a question whether the traffic signals for the new intersection will be delivered in time to be installed this fall, or if it'll be next spring. So if not fall, spring, but the, most of the pavement work, the, the work that you're seeing now that's very disruptive is the concrete repairs. That'll, that'll wrap up here, certainly this fall. Then there's lighting and then the, the enlarging of that intersection, which will help the issue that you're talking about now. I just don't know if the striping and the, the actual mast arms will be installed this fall or it's next spring.
I don't think we can really know until after the construction's finished out there on Mormon Trek, because, I mean, you know, when I was driving out there, two lanes were shut down and there's all, the barriers were up and, and there were big holes in the concrete.
I'm just suggesting that sometime later this winter, sometime maybe after the first of the year, before we actually get into the design of Gilbert, that we have some discussion about how fast we're moving for with the road diets.
But there is really a lot complain about, what's it called?
Mormon Trek.
Mormon Trek, because especially in the morning time, I receive a lot of people that just say like, we, we just trying to get our kids to school so we can go to work, and this is really delaying us and-
It's true. It's two lanes right now.
Yeah. We're two lanes, and the biggest thing-
Right, right.
The biggest thing is that the intersection is two lanes.
The intersection.
When, when it's all done, the intersection will fan out quite a bit-
Sure.
-which helps shorten up that delay.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell anybody to think of their experience right now as going to be similar to what it would be after.
Let me suggest this, Susan, could you bring your suggestion back up in another few months, a couple or three months, about having a work session focused on, on this particular topic?
Yep.
Any other items?
Nope.
All right, I think we're at council updates on assigned boards, et cetera. This should go pretty quickly. Rockne, could you start and we'll move to your left, which would be Maz, you're next.
So iowassityliterature.org, there's going to be the Iowa City Book Festival from October 1st to, to October 7th. And John Kenyon always does a terrific job, so go to iowassitybookfestival.org and check out those dates. And I think that's, it's going to be a great event, so. I wish I was more articulate right now, but I'm tired. Check it out, that's it.
Maz?
Okay, I had my second meeting with the seat, and they have now interactive voice response, IVR. This system has been implemented July 1st. The goal of this system is to call the people around 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. the night before the ride. You know, the subscription rider will not receive the call. And there will be an option to cancel the ride. If you don't want to go tomorrow, you can just cancel it, you know, while you are listening to the options. They may also get a call one hour before the schedule ride to make sure they still want to go. This system really has been working fine and also make that, give the people ability to make a call out if they are notification, the weather was bad or anything, they can just like also make call, you know, the system will call them and say the weather is not good or they're canceling the service. They will be also adding, yeah, the inspection form to the table. This will allow things to be logged up electronically, hoping to have this, you know, like, they already done this. And I know that they, they done also a rider survey. Just, I guess Iowa City is already renew their eligibility for two years. But that's true, right? And the rest of the community, you know, I guess they, they receive from Coroville and from, anyway, they, you know, the survey just really is saying that people are very pleased about the new system and they like it. We're going to have our next meeting on November 27.
All right. Pauline?
I think I already talked about the East Central Iowa Council of Governments meeting that we had last week, but I think I forgot to mention, but most people know that that bus service is from Iowa City to Cedar Rapids, which hopefully is going to be a good thing. And they're hoping that it helps reduce some of the traffic on 380.
The Access Center Committee continues to meet. We had an executive committee meeting today, just continue to work with the, the region, which is the healthcare dollars coming out of the East, I'm not sure, the region anyways, northeast part of Iowa. I don't get these regions when it comes to these healthcare dollars, but anyways, making sure that they've committed their dollars, just continuing to do, work through all the due diligence on the property, starting to do some of the design work with the architects, still discussing regulations coming out of the state, et cetera. There are just gazillion different details that need to be pulled together on this and particularly with the people who have the healthcare background, so they're doing a great job.
Yeah, sounds like a real progress. Nothing, nothing for me. Okay, I only have one thing, and that is that the Metro Coalition is going to be meeting at the same time as the Iowa League of Cities meeting. So Ashley, you and Pauline are going out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I assume you're going to be participating in that meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good deal. Let us know what happens.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Not, we're done. Thank you.